Yeah, I saw it. Okay, I think it's 12:00. We'll go ahead and call the meeting order. This is a special call meeting of the Bardstown City Council. So, a special call meeting. We're restricted to the agenda items, and we'll have to stick to that today. We don't have any input from the public on the items that we're going to have or take questions from the public because of that. So, the purpose of this is to discuss three ordinances, and I think Councilman Copeland made good suggestion last week that we tabled that until we had the full group of you all here. Two of you all were absent, so that's why we have moved for this meeting today. And since two of the ordinances are on a timetable, then we have to take into account this week and try to get to some decision where or another by, hopefully, tomorrow evening. So, and we do need some discussion on the three ordinances about whether it's language and then also, obviously, on the compensation ordinances. We have to try to arrive at some kind of consensus of a figure that we can vote on. So, the first item is the Chapter 9, as it relates to animals, more specifically, whether we can permit chickens to be raised in Bardstown. And I guess you've got a draft of an ordinance, but I know many of us and all of us have had a lot of feedback from the public on both sides of the issue. And so, I guess my question to you all is, do we think the ordinance is okay as it stands, or should we be discussing some additions or corrections to the draft?
And if you all want to know how we got to this point, the ordinance that you have before you is the ordinance is it started with the draft that was submitted by the Mr. Kipper, I think, in a coalition of people that were interested in this issue. And last fall, I went ahead and took that and put that into ordinance form. And then, since that time, you know, obviously, through a series of emails, asked you all for comments without doing a round robin discussion. So, some of the changes that have been made, the number of chickens reduced from 12 to six. There's been added a prohibition on the it would be not applicable in historic district and that it the fee, the annual fee was set at $100. And those are all things that have kind of been either blanks that have been filled in or changes that have been made.
So, it's my understanding that the this ordinance says six female, I mean, six female mature chickens and possibility of six more chicks, so a total of 12. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
When I'm reading this.
Because that would mean, I think, the way I would read it is that once those six chicks became mature, then you'd have to reduce your to the total of six.
Or get six more.
So, you just, once those six chicks become mature, hens at six months, you have to reduce your flock to back to six. That's how I interpret what the language we have there.
So, a total of six mature chicks, the most at all times, at any time.
I'm not the expert on urban agriculture, but I have talked to several people and did a few site visits and so forth. And one of the individuals I talked to thought six was high. Some of the people sitting here probably have more experience than I do, but I was told that with four hens, you can get four to seven eggs a day. And if you do the math, that's quite a few eggs in a week and a month and so forth. And I thought, when this was proposed, and I'm not saying I'm for the ordinance, I'm exactly right, that it was to have these hens to raise the eggs so that they could feed their family. And obviously, if somebody wants to give eggs away, I mean, that's fine too. I take exception to the number of six. And I know it's only a draft. I would mention that since the mayor did ask that question.
I would have to, I'm sorry, no problem. I would have to mirror Councilman Williams' sentiments as far as the numbers. I think six would be too many, and if you're allowing six and then six young ones to be raised, it's difficult to determine, you know, after a year's time or if it's a pullet or whatever you get into, it's difficult to determine that from a mature bird. So, you would be faced with having 12 there for a period of time. And then, at what point would you, you know, have them reduce to that number of animals? I would take exception with that number. Probably, not saying I'm for the ordinance or the draft either, but you probably have to see that reduced, maybe even in the reading. But also, I would be concerned with the paragraph that lists about the coops and the enclosures, the height of those. It really doesn't number or limit them to a number. It just says, you know, confine a hen coop or cage, you know, so that is there a possibility that they could have?
I think there's a 10-foot number in there, I think.
A 10-foot per.
If anyone lower than that.
Yeah, per, per coop, right. Or four size or a total number.
Coops cannot be taller than 10 feet.
But it is a limit.
Maybe all of them should be allowed.
Right.
I think that would be a good idea, perhaps, to restrict the height to be the height of a permitted privacy fence.
Right. Absolutely. The whole tower of those fence.
Absolutely.
I thought, in reference to the chickens, I thought it was six total, not a possibility of six mature chickens and six. Well, that is something that definitely would need to be changed.
Say that again, people.
Um, when I spoke with Mr. Kipper, I thought that it was six, a total of six chickens, not six chicks and then six mature hens. So, I just thought it was six total.
So, you mean, when the chicks are immediately hatched, that they would have to be removed from the property?
Well, I, I just think that there should only be a total up to six chickens, regardless of what they are.
Whatever state, then you don't have to guess what state.
Right, right. Exactly.
This one lay an egg or them.
Because that gives, that's way too many chickens.
They can breed small chickens and claim that they're pullets or they're chicks, you know, they're not fully mature.
So, that would need to definitely be changed.
So, there's one over here who's talking about a total of six, and there's a couple over here, a total of four, it sounds like.
I got a question, another question. If we presented this on first reading and we had a vote, and the vote was not to put this ordinance on the books, do we have to continue with this?
Just that second reading. Oh, if you do this, you know.
The question is, if you had a first reading of this ordinance and say it was 4 to 2 that we didn't want chickens in the city at all and we didn't want to approve this ordinance, would we have to vote in front of?
Yeah, the first reading vote is not behind me.
Now, I think the purpose of this is to try to get the language of the ordinance, at least, to a point where we feel comfortable about an up or down vote. That's the reason for this discussion today. First reading, that's where I'm.
Okay.
The first, the first reading will be from the chicken ordinance that's titled tomorrow evening and possibly the following Tuesday. But today's, today's purpose is just to get the language. If there needs to be some changes to the language in the draft, that's what this discussion's about.
Yeah, I've also done some research on it. I know, I saw in one city, if you have a half acre lot or less, that they limit it to three chickens, depends on how big your lot is. And we don't have anything here. And I know when all this first came up, the pro-chicken ordinance people, you know, asked, I probably asked everybody, you know, if you would support it and vote for it. And of course, I told them then, I didn't see any reason not to vote for it unless I, but I wouldn't go and give them a commitment unless I got heard from everybody else. Now, I've heard a lot of negative stuff and looked into it. I mean, our ordinance, I think, says that there can be no noise from this. And my research shows that there's no such thing as no noise even from hens, that I was researching some, especially when they lay eggs, and they might go up and carry on for 30 or 40 minutes, you know, like they're proud of their egg they laid or something like that is the way they explain it.
But it says on the joint, the noise shouldn't carry over to adjoining properties. I don't know.
Oh, I think the way these, some of these people said they were 45, 70 feet away. And our ordinance says, just the chickens can be all the way up to the property line, but the coop has to be at least 15 feet away. And when it's first drafted, they they headed, been having limited how far, had how far it had to be from the house, which was 25 feet. And that's when we need to make it off the property line too, because I don't want, people have nice patios and feathers come over while they're cooking out and whatnot.
It says audible on any adjoining lot.
Yeah, but.
I guess what you're.
I'm saying, I don't, I think it's going to be audible on, even if you have a two acre lot, I think it's going to be audible, what I understand, you know, from the, even hens are noisy.
That's absolutely true.
So, and then, you know, we have.
Is it possible to either enforce or have, should either, should not be the language?
Oh, this, this, it will be an enforcement nightmare. I mean, when I was county attorney, one of the biggest issues that we had with neighbors was dogs. And, and it was, every day, we had people coming in, you know, well, not every day, maybe, you know, time or two a week. And they, we had neighbor versus neighbor arguments over dogs and whether they were getting out and biting people and this and that. And this, this, I think, will be an enforcement nightmare on what is clean, you know, you can't, it says it's supposed to be clean and the feces and everything, but you can't go out there every time, you know, every five minutes and clean up, you know. So, there has to be some sort of accumulation. And I think, I would, well, I was probably up until three or four days, probably going to vote for it. I probably am not now because of what I've got.
Again, going back to the purpose, I think we have committed that we want to put this to a vote.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, I think we need to make sure we put some language in an ordinance that we can put for an up or down vote. So, I think that's the reason for this discussion today.
What, and what I, Councilman Buckman approached me early on and said, you know, I'm not sure, you know, he said, I've got real concerns about this. And what I told Councilman Buckman, as you recall, as I said, my goal is to make this the best ordinance so that even the people that don't vote for it, if it passes, it's the best ordinance it can be. So, that's the attempt here is to. I would, I mean, I would, 12 chickens, chickens and chicks or whatever, I think we definitely need to reduce that. And the, and I think we need to put a bigger setback line than 15 feet from somebody's neighbor. It was kind of a compromise because they said it was, if we made it 25 feet, then a lot of small lots, you couldn't put chickens on. Well, on the other hand, if it's that small lot, I'm not sure, it'd all be chickens, it's going to be right on top of your neighbors and.
Right now, it's 15 feet from the property line, 25 feet from adjacent structures.
And it's just the coop is 15 feet. The chickens can migrate now all the way up to property line where it's written.
Now, they're supposed to be kept in the coop.
No, no, they, because if you look, there's a 50-some-odd square foot thing of the, for the coop, but then we have to have 16 square feet per chicken. And that kind of keep them, yeah, so that doesn't mathematically work out with, it started out being 12 chickens. That's the way you don't understand, the coop is just where those brood's, and then they have runs out, that'll be cages. And of course, somebody, there was a farmer mentioned, you know, unless we require tops on it, that chickens can fly and they'll get out, you know.
Free range.
And I know somebody else had mentioned, and I don't know how you can draft an ordinance to stop this, is it about that it will draw snakes, coyotes, possums? And, I mean, I can tell you from, you know, live north of town, that when we had a dog, had dog food out, possum, and we had in our garage, possum, we had possum and raccoon problems galore in our garage. Then we had a bird came in and laid bird eggs in our shelf, and the next thing we knew was a copperhead in there eating them. So, it, you know, it does do what they say.
Are you making a suggestion then, if we change the restrictions on setbacks, and if so?
You know, if we're going to do it, if we're making the best possible ordinance, you know, and if it ends up passing, you know, I think you, I'd want 25-foot setback for hens and tubes.
And you've got the height of the coop also.
And then, set, I don't know what's the maximum.
The maximum height of a privacy fence.
Maybe six.
Six?
No, it's seven.
Seven.
It used to be six, right?
I'd say we would want to limit it to that.
Yeah, I agree with that one too.
So, setback or?
I mean, it's, you know, everybody says, well, they think 15 or whatever is good enough. I mean, I'm not, just because I'm saying it, then it's not, so.
What's the other feeling, you've got the setback on the coop and the runs?
I think Councilman Buckman had a comment. Did you have a comment?
You know, I guess, you know, we keep asking some of these things about, and I've got almost every one of those things, somebody's addressed already today. But no matter how well we do this, there's going to be repercussions from this. We're not going to get everything in that ordinance. It's just not going to happen. And, you know, I don't think there's been anything mentioned about, you know, what if somebody abandoned these chicks or how do you dispose of them? What, that, to me, is probably the biggest issue of all of them.
And maybe we ought to talk about whether it's supportive if we can have a first reading, you know, going on.
Mayor, if I could, I received an email from one of our constituents that I shared with our attorney, and he wants to look over that. It's got some things that we possibly should consider that aren't actually defined in our draft. And so, I think everybody knows what I'm talking about. That's all right. So, I think we ought to consider that. Also, too, we ought to, in advance, consider that we have a part-time code enforcement officer. If I'm not mistaken, he has to enforce seven to eight ordinances to include drainage control, animals, solid waste management, occupational fees, nuisances, which are very high frequency, tall grass weeds, et cetera, sign regulations, and we have a lot of signs right now for, well, we got a lot of signs out there, so it's high value. Property maintenance, and I think, and I may be wrong here, Mayor, I think he or she may deal with litter as well.
If we can.
Yeah, so.
Innocence.
Yeah, and so, what we're proposing here is to potentially add another ordinance that he is going to have to deal with. And I just want everybody to know that we're stretched right now, we're going to put another one there. And now he's got to count chicks, hens, or whatever, and all that kind of stuff, so.
Within the framework of this discussion, as the mayor already mentioned, you know, his purpose is to draft the best ordinance that we possibly can for the pass. But we're offering our opinions as to why we think it is a good or not a good idea. You know, I'd like to add that, you know, I think we're, we shouldn't be in a position to legislate the wants of a few over the wants and needs of many. And, you know, where we're encroaching upon someone's privacy or, you know, the way they, the way they enjoy their property as is, we're asking them to accept something that they may not want, so.
With about the fee, our city attorney recommended a $100 a year fee, is that, because there is, to the points that have just been raised about code enforcement and so forth, there's going to be a lot of additional work on part of the city should this pass. So, we felt like the fee should help cover some of that cost. And that's why the $100, because I know some other cities have smaller fees perhaps, but they may have a full-time code enforcement department, you know, they might have multiple people, we're staffed with a part-time. So, is there, are you all comfortable with the $100 permit?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I am.
I think it's appropriate.
And there are some places that don't require a fee, but in talking to someone else, they feel like, if you're going to have something like this, you need to have a fee associated with it, because a lot of times, when you let people do things for free, they don't appreciate it, you know, that type of thing. And also, too, Mayor, I think there are 11 cities in the state of Kentucky that allow chickens. I was surprised that Etown was one of them.
Little Old Mexico.
I'm always, I always find it's kind of, somebody pays $100 fee, has to go through the inspection and line it up, applications, has to be in a house, perhaps, because you have to have it on your property with the resident, that is not in a subdivision that prohibits raising chickens, and is also not in the historical district. I wonder if there's anybody left out there that's in, would be in the limited areas that would even be interested in doing this? I mean, or is it really an issue that's going to be applied? Because I know the major proponent of it with the vacant lot and the non-historical district, kind of puts him out anyhow.
Would we be discriminating? You have vacant lots, not.
You can't structure it based on one person.
Oh, I agree with that. But I, I'm just wondering if there is, is there going to be even one person that would, are we using all these resources and time and everything? I mean, I would like the, if there's anybody out there, I don't want media to get out, if there's anybody out there that emailed me and said, yes, I, in a subdivision, doesn't have restricted, I'm not in the historical area, and I'm going to put it on my yard of my house, you know.
John, you got to realize.
And go pay all the fees and the expenses.
Not everybody lives in a subdivision, or not considered a subdivision. We have areas in town that.
Oh, I know, I know there are areas that would, this would apply to, but I don't want to say it's probably a less, a third or less than the potential of residents in Bardstown.
I don't know, I mean.
Those, you know, the key building apartments.
I realize that.
Yeah.
But we do have sections of Bardstown that are, you know, 150, 75 years old that.
You know, Maple Hills, Henry Towns, but then, then those are areas of very small ones.
Westwood, Westwood Trail.
Westwood Trail, I think, probably has.
It's not viable, no.
They don't have a home association.
And neither, neither does Edgewood. They don't have a viable homeowner association.
You don't have to have a homeowner association, you just have to have subdivision restrictions. Edgewood has subdivision restrictions.
But.
And I think that, I'm pretty.
They don't have anybody to enforce it, then how about that? If you don't have a, it doesn't happen.
Right. One thing, a couple of things here. A question the mayor asked me to contact the extension office. Robbie Smith is the extension agent, and because the ordinance says that they're going to be involved, and, you know, somebody, the mayor said, we might want to need to ask them if they want to be involved. And I said, sure. So, he sent me an email. It says, Tim, I've been involved in the chicken ordinance modeling for a while. The scope of R, and they put extension involvement, on the other side of passage would be education and initial inspection to make sure that the proposed chicken keepers facilities met qualifications of the ordinance. We will not be involved in receiving complaints or policing once established. We offer a, we will offer a barn yards, excuse me, backyards chickens workshop annually for updates and new permits. And then, I've been trying to keep track of some of these comments, but the one comment I would make is, is that if you all, during this discussion, if, if, if the feeling of the council is, we can't make this work to the point where I, being a councilman, would vote for it, I think that's a vote. And I guess, I don't know that you all should go through the process of having a first and a second read only to ultimately and inevitably vote it down. There's no requirement that you all do that.
That kind of leads into where I was at. Are we at the point with some of these questions that have been raised today that we want to change some of the language based on this discussion today about the number of chickens, the height, setbacks, et cetera? And still bring it for a first reading fairly soon. I mean, I kind, I think I kind of know based on the discussion what some of the language issues are, number, number of chickens, height, setbacks, whether the run should be covered, you know, where they allow, that kind of stuff. Is there other language that we need to address?
Well, I think the noise thing is an impossible thing, because we say, no noise leaves your property, but I don't think there's possi, well, I mean, have a chicken coop that noise leave.
I think you have to, sign that as if we take it to a vote.
Yeah.
I think that language needs to be in there. That would be a decision you all need to make, based on whether that is enforceable or not.
Do we have to bring this before the, do we have to bring it to the ordinance to vote?
Well, I guess, it takes, Tim, correct me, if one person introduces it, then it's on for a second reading. Would that, is that right? I think if someone wants to introduce an ordinance, it will be on for a first reading.
So, are we?
And then a second too. And then, again, then the vote. Nobody introduces it, then it won't be on.
So, that's kind of where I was going, I asked the question that I asked earlier.
Well, I should, then would it be appropriate, as far as a special call meeting, to tell the council whether they want to even put it to a first reading or not? Is that?
Well, in, that's, yes.
Revise the, assuming we revise this language with the questions you all raised, do you all, I guess my question would, I would like, can we, are you saying we can't poll is whether we want to even go any further with this at this point?
Yes, if you want to have, if you even want to entertain the ordinance, yes, sir.
Is there any other discussion about the language first before we talk about going forward?
And if you all want to entertain it, then I've got some cross-throughs and stuff that I'll run through.
So, I don't hear any more discussion about the language, so I guess by putting before the council, the question of whether, based on the discussion today and the feedback from the public that you've received and the research you've done, is the council wanting to proceed with a first reading with these changes that we've discussed today?
Okay, I can speak on that?
Sure. I asked the question.
I think that with the questions that we've received and the information that's educated us further, that the ordinance is not ready to go further for a vote. Previously, I had stated that we had needed to have a vote because they had come back so many times. And after research and looking at the ordinance and, and feedback, the ordinance is not ready to be presented for a vote. So, I can't introduce it as it is right now.
I think, though, the question, Councilman Shephard says, oh, it is, even with, I think everybody's in agreement on that point, that the ordinance is not ready, but in spite of that, with all the questions that have been raised today, enforcement issues and so forth, even with modifications, does this group even want to go forward with changes to the existing draft and then put it before vote or not? Or should we let it live? We don't think it's enforceable, and we think it's got issues that we might not be able to overcome.
I'll speak to that. Like I said before, up till four or five days ago, that's probably a yes, but after getting emails in and research into it and seeing problems, chickens, they're farm animals, and probably need to be on agricultural property. So, at this, I'm not saying I would never not vote yes at some point in the future, but I can't proceed, so I would be a no at this point.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I have another.
Listen, I guess I'm going to just go ahead and poll the council, you know, if that's okay, unless you have some more.
I was, I was just going to comment, but if you're going this direction.
I'll give everybody an opportunity here. Councilman Copeland, you're.
Well, I would, I would say no, and the reason is because. Well, I would, I would say no, and the reason is because, um, simply the code enforcement of it, um, we only have a part-time, and it is hard for him to keep up with what's going on right now. The city cannot afford to, um, put on a full-time, and the fees of a hundred dollars does not compensate for, uh, what he would be doing out in the public. So, uh, at this time, if we could not have a full-time code enforcement officer, um, and without the assistance of the ag, um, we wouldn't be able to do this.
Thank you. Councilman Buckman?
I said a few minutes ago, I still think there, there, you're seeing repercussions if this thing were to go, so, uh, I'm totally opposed to it right now, too. And part, part of my biggest issue is, is we exclude one neighborhood and not another, and I just don't think there's anything there to, to help people that live in areas that don't have an HOA or historical district.
Thank you. Councilman Williams?
It's enforceable.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Councilman Shekels?
No.
Councilman Bowles?
I, I can't support, uh, moving forward with a, and using city resources, uh, can't support moving forward with an ordinance, uh, for a first reading even, no.
So I would say that, based on the comments, that, you know, there's not a councilman that's ready to introduce the ordinance even if we revise it from this draft, so, uh, it's a moot point at this point. We won't be going forward with a first reading tomorrow evening, uh, based on the discussion today, so, thank you, and I appreciate everybody's input, and everybody's put a lot of time and thought into it. Okay. Uh, next order of business is, uh, the compensation for the council as well as the, uh, mayor, and, you know, we've provided you all with some research that we've done, I know what you all discussed in general terms, uh, last time we, excuse me, brought this before you all, uh, now I think there's a draft of the ordinance, but the key part of both ordinances is that we need to have at least some kind of consensus on a number to put in, if we are gonna raise the, must the compensation for this council and the mayor, at least, again, to put it to a vote, that doesn't necessarily mean whatever number we arrive at today would be a one, it's gonna be a unanimous vote or whatever, but we do need to, uh, come up with some discussion points or some suggestions. So, uh, the council compensation is the first, so, uh, I'll open the floor to discussion on anyone's opinion on what you feel should be in order in that regard.
I'll be happy to start.
This one, second?
Yeah. Um, I, I arrived at a number here, I mean, I, first off, I think it's, it's fine for, for the council to receive a small amount of money for what time we put into the shop. Anyway, it was done several years ago, people must have thought it was appropriate then, so anyway, I, I just kind of took in a non-professional manner, really, the Consumer Price Index, which averaged, it looked like about two percent over the last ten to, ten years anyway. So if you take, if I took that number and add that out, that comes to about, over eighteen year period, twelve thousand one hundred and two dollars. And, uh, that is a figure that I would be very comfortable with for a city council. Um, and simply based on that, at, you know, at, so you take that nine thousand dollars that it is now, if you add that, that's how the numbers you come up with, and...
And what about twenty years?
I did it for eighteen, it's been eighteen, isn't it?
I think John said, I think it's twenty million, you're, you're close.
I'm really close, so I can go back, I can do another two hundred dollars.
Of course, it'll be a compound, maybe two or...
I, I did compound it, I did.
So, your, your suggestion would be go from the seven fifty a month to one thousand, but...
Uh, yes.
Right. Yes. Any other discussions, John?
Twenty years, two, for twenty years, a two fifty, I, I think this, I think it should be more than that. Maybe I'm a little insane, I've gone and been doing it for twenty years, but, uh, I'd be more comfortable with somewhere in the neighborhood of thirteen fifty a month, whatever breaks out to you.
All right, thirteen fifty and a thousand.
But to go from seven fifty to two thousand, that's, that's really a counterpoint in the face of what these council people have to deal with.
I'm in agreement with Councilman Buckman and his figures, I think, uh, a price index increase is probably a fair way to look at it, since, you know, my opinion's been, is already known that, you know, I think that this, this, what we do is, is, I consider a community service, uh, I don't think any one of us would, uh, would say that we did it for the money, absolutely not, and, and that's, that's part of, of being a citizen and contributing to your community. I think that that, that increase, a small increase is, is fair, and even then follow up, uh, you know, years after that, and follow the price index, and even set in, uh, some type of language that would, uh, that would follow a price index increase, uh, maybe per election or per council, uh, to, to prevent this from happening again, to prevent that, uh, that long of a lag, uh, to happen before that, that you follow some type of an increased structure. But I'm, I'm in agreement with Councilman Buckman.
Yeah, if you think twelve, twelve is more appropriate than...
Would be more appropriate, yes.
Councilman Shekels, I think that works out to sixteen thousand two hundred, your, your figure.
You know, that's, that's, if you, if you compare what we do as a legislative body with what the county does as a legislative body, and more of the things that we have to deal with in the course of time, that, that, and in comparison, then, I think that's all, I think it's all fair. True enough, we're not, we're not sure doing it for, for the money, but, uh, we do do it, and we, we try to do a good job in making the city run the way it should be run, and, uh, I think that would be a fair compromise. If you, if you compare our duties and responsibilities to what the county does and their responsibilities, you know, being on even keel, and we're still not on even keel by any means, but, uh, I think that would be fair. So we might be revisiting this every five, ten, four, eight, twelve years, whatever. Do you agree with that?
That's the three, Councilman, what about, I mean, this is your all's decision, it's not...
Yeah, that, that's, that's how, that's how I'm arriving, that, that's how I'm arriving with that decision.
All right. Uh, Mayor, I, I just roughly had figured about thirteen fifty, not to exceed that, so if, if we're having a discussion here, we need to have a meeting of the minds and come to some kind of compromise, I'm willing to work with that.
Well, we gotta come up with a number we can put in for a vote, so, you know, not that you would be unanimous on that number, but at least you want to be a number we can put in for a vote, so, here's a not to exceed that.
Yeah.
You can't put that in an ordinance.
Correct. Correct.
So can you come up with...
But you would, you would not be in favor of...
Can you say more definitive?
What the COA, you mean?
The, the Consumer Price Index adjustment?
Oh, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just saying from my notes where I was, and so, um, I'm willing to work with any number that the council feels comfortable with, what I'm saying.
Okay. Councilman Cogan?
As stated in the meeting before, thirteen fifty. Um, the reason being is because, um, our culture is changing, um, the dynamics of our, the age groups are changing, and the, um, volunteerism is dying. And in order to get, uh, more people out to, uh, do a civic duty, it's like when, you know, you join the army, you're not gonna get paid a lot to do it, but you're not gonna do it for free either, and it's been twenty years, and, and I've received, I mean, I kept my emails, so, you know, there were more yays toward a specific number than there were ones that said nine hundred, a thousand, just because twenty years had elapsed. And I know it's hard for us to think of something like this, but what we have to remember is that the reason why it is during the election year is because that's the way it has to be, and this, we're not giving ourselves a raise, because who knows who's running or who will be back on the council. So I hope that we, we think about that, but I think that it will bring, um, more people that really don't have the time to, um, come out or, you know, have the specific jobs that they're able to lead. You know, a lot of people have to leave their jobs, um, uh, you know, the vacations are kind of messed up, you don't wanna miss so many meetings, you have to travel, you wanna train, um, there's a lot of responsibility, um, with, with being a council person, a council member, um, you know, the, the, the experience that we just had, you know, who would wanna, wanna go through that? So I, I'm just saying that in order to, to gain more qualified candidates, um, and, and even, even, you know, bring that into the mayor's stratosphere, we, we need to think about being fair, and, and you don't wanna revisit this. We, we don't want to, uh, sit back five years from now and say, oh my God, you know, we need to think about, uh, the council pay and be, uh, in accordance with other cities that are around us as well. I mean, we're one of the most visible councils, I would say, in our region. We do a lot, uh, we go a lot of places, and we do not get free tickets. We don't get free tickets to events, I mean, I'm thankful that we have one right here from Heaven Hill today, but that, that's not part of it. When we go somewhere, we're paying to go, and, and that's because we want to represent our council, and we want to represent our community. Um, so I, I think, I think that's fair. Um, I know we have to work out the numbers, but I think we need to be fair to the people that will come on board.
Good, John? Hey, I was gonna, are you anything else, Keisha?
No.
Well, I'm, like, they would somewhat, when I ran, I didn't look at how much it paid or didn't pay, because that wasn't really a concern to me, but it is a lot of time, a lot of effort, the other, so, of course, the county officials get paid, and I'll start with the Consumer Price Index, I would be in favor of that. All the county officials, uh, pay as adjusted according, according to the Consumer Price Index, and they have to do the same thing we're doing, if they wanna make a raise beyond that, they have to bring it for an election, uh, the year of election and so forth. And of course, I kind of mentioned before that it, it's not gonna benefit me at all, because I'm not looking to run again next year, so, but I do think, uh, like Keisha said, there are some expenses, especially, I know, especially earlier part of my term, I had quite a few expenses, I, I don't know if I could smittle for reimbursement or not, but I, I never did, but, uh, you know, there, it's just too much trouble to add up, keep, keep track all expenses. And I was a little bit lazier than Joe was, uh, I went and found a program on the federal website that you could punch something in that'd tell you what the dollar is a day, so I didn't have to do the two percent and the, the calculations, and it, it comes around off of about eleven hundred dollars a month, and, and that's probably where I would go, and a compromise maybe between the two somewhere or something.
Well, if you're, if you're gonna be, if you're gonna be, uh, a council person that wants to do a new job, then you need to be, you need to take it upon yourself to be knowledgeable and take advantage of, like Keisha said, well, the training that goes on, you know, I know in years past, and of course, I've been sitting in here spot for a long time, and I know that, I know the importance of, of, of training, I know the importance of representing your city, I know the, I know the feedback, and I know the, the benefits we get from being council people, mayors, or whatever, any, any, any knowledgeable person, and when we're out here representing our city, it takes time, it takes effort, but the returns are, are, are more than what we do, and like I say, thirteen hundred dollars a month is still not, uh, any kind of money that, uh, is gonna change anybody's standard of living or anything, but it does compensate for, uh, for the things that we do to benefit our city. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a crazy amount of money, and I don't think anybody that's knowledgeable, uh, in this city would, would oppose that. But, uh, that's just my opinion, because I've been doing it for a long time, and I've seen the benefits of representing your city, what it does, and we've been doing it for little or nothing, so, so, and that's in this thirteen fifty is not gonna, uh, break the city.
Based on what I've heard, though, right now, it looks like we're, we're not in a, you know, it looks like we have maybe three of the council are in agreement towards the upper end, and three are in agreement more towards a lower figure, so, you know, I really hope, would want this to be your all's decision, I don't feel like, I mean, I'm, if we go to put a number in there and it's tied vote, I'm gonna have to break the tie, I mean, I'll do that, but I would be thinking it would be behoove you guys and ladies to come up with a number that you all could be... Right now, I don't think we have a number, it looks like to be we're split between a high of sixteen thousand and perhaps a lower of twelve, so, uh, is there any compromise there?
Councilman Kelly, what was your number a year?
Uh, whatever time split.
He said a number hundred.
Thirteen two? It'd be thirteen thousand one hundred, would that be right?
Two, two.
Thirteen two.
I remember, I said, I, I said a math, so I mean, I'm, I'm willing to work to make this work, so...
Well, that, that's about what you're, that dollar fifty-three that you came up with, would take it from nine thousand to about thirteen five, fifty percent increase.
It was like, ran off to eleven hundred a month.
Yeah, a dollar, you said a dollar was worth a dollar fifty-three twenty years ago, so if you take fifty percent of the nine thousand, that's forty, forty-five hundred, that would take you to thirteen five.
Right.
Versus, uh, based on my math, that would be higher than the twelve, eleven hundred a month, so I'm, I mean, what's your all's pleasure as far as where you wanna put in the ordinance for a, another, it sounds like we're split, though, at this point.
Has it, had, one more question, I mean, is, is everybody in agreement as that should be, that the ordinance, whatever that number should be, will be, uh, increased each year at the Consumer Price Index? So it's not gonna be like you're coming back ten years and one, another raises or, or doubling month, you know, whatever.
Right.
If it's constant, if it's constant, it looks like that number is, is about what it should be.
Yeah.
So, why would we not do that now and then it's, it's over?
Yeah.
To have that included.
Yeah, I agree with the CPI thing, because it'll probably keep this issue from coming up in the future, and, you know, whereas, where, you know, we don't know who's gonna be on the council twenty years from now, they may triple it, you know, if they get opportunity to do it, so it might keep them from doing it, huh?
I'm sorry, what'd you say, John?
I know who won't be on the council.
You never know.
I know who won't be on the council.
It's hard to argue that, you know, using the CPI, I think was a, is a good idea,
and also calculating from maybe where it is today, where it's, you know, where it started twenty years ago, where we ought to be today, and you all got the figures from the other cities, I, I think, uh, either one of those, that thirteen five to the sixteen is, certainly in the, uh, in line with the size of the city that we have and the duties of the council, but, again, I don't wanna go to a, a first reading unless we have some consensus of you all, I think this is, it should be your all's decision, but I'm happy to, if it ends up in a tie, I'll break it, but I'm not gonna tell you how it's gonna go.
Well, it sounded like everybody's agreeable to the increase, but not...
Well, one of the things that you all, and I wasn't gonna get into this, but one of the things you all ought to consider is, is that you're now having a third meeting, which is a full-blown meeting, there's not, if you look at fiscal court, fiscal courts are not having three meetings, you all have a committee structure that's fairly well utilized, um, and, so I think that the person that was getting paid seven hundred and fifty dollars however many years ago, didn't have the responsibilities that you all have today.
Right.
Um, I mean, you've got a, a full-time fire department, you've got, uh, a police department, look at the increase in the, the police department. Your, the police department's doubled in size, probably at least, you know, I mean, um...
Oh, and more than that twenty years.
Yeah, I mean, so, I...
Well, it looks like, just looking at the numbers, Bill Shekels can appreciate this, because we do, do this every day in our line of work, it's like, you've got a low of twelve and a high of sixteen, and if you split the difference, you, you'd come to fourteen, that's a little less than what the top end, but a little more than the low end. Is that a number that makes any sense?
I think a fair way of looking at it is, in my opinion, is, is the CPI. I mean, I think if you look at those numbers, you can't argue with that as being a fair, uh, fair rate of, of change over that period of time. So if you look at that number, and as Councilman Kelly stated, we could go with any one of those numbers, I mean, whichever one is correct, uh, you know, I would, I would be on board with that, not with the maximum, but, you know, I would be on board with that, and then, but also add the language that we don't have to come back, or future councils don't have to come back and revisit this. Every election year, we just go ahead and add the CPI to the, to the sound.
That figure...
I don't think every year, I think.
Well, the, the CPI is a good number, it's a good, it's a good, it's a good, uh, parameter change, but you also, like, like, uh, Tim said, you gotta take, I can, I can speak from experience, because I've been here this long, things have changed drastically in the twenty years since I've been involved in the council, from, from the amount of people, personnel, people we have in the city, and all the other duties and responsibilities taking place. Now, to make this thing go, to make this thing, go and put this thing to bed, I just figuring here, if you change, if you change the, the compensation from seven fifty to twelve fifty, and put in the cost, with the annual cost of living... cost of living, that'll make, that's $15,000 a year, less than the 1620. But if you do 1250, put that in there, put the cost of living raise in there, put that number in there. That's what I'd be willing to consider.
1250, what's...
1250, that's $15,000 a year, which is not...
I think that's in line, I think the base magistrate is somewhere around 15, 16, but then they have mostly a line out for travel and go with the savings and all that. You said that would be 15,000.
1250 times 12 is 15,000. I would consider anything less. I was saying bump it up to 1,200, call it 15,000. We'll never get out of here.
We need to put around this, this fair and respectable and just stop to break it.
I agree with last step that Tim said, you know, that everything has grown, you've got a lot more responsibilities than 18 years ago, 20 years ago, whatever it was. So I'd be willing to do 12,500.
Keisha, how do you feel? Roll on.
I'm the, that'd be fine because I had a number not to exceed, so that's below that number.
Okay.
It sounds like, David, I don't know if you have anything else to comment on. I think I know what your position is.
I think everybody knows where I stand.
Well, I think with this now, it sounds like to me that consensus would be at least for the ordinance on first reading to go to the 1250 a month, 15,000, and include the CPI.
No, I'll tell you what, since I don't have really any interest in this, I'll be the one to introduce it then.
We, I think we, well, we can do that. We could do, we can do these discussion, first read, discussion, first read. It's actually split out a little differently behind.
Or you come back when the mayor report is finished.
Well, my situation's a little different, obviously, to some degree, I guess, because I guess it's kind of on me to make a recommendation. Based on, I've just looked at, you know, there's not one size fits all with all these cities. You all saw council pay in the various cities at our size and the mayors. You can tell pretty easily that some mayors are full-time, some are part-time, and it's my intention that, and I said this earlier, I think that as long as I'm going to stay in the job, and I think going forward, it still needs to be a part-time position and therefore not, you know, the higher end pay that you see with some of these cities that have mayors making 65,000, 42,000, 54,000, 67,000. All of those are obviously full-time positions. Based on what I, the research I've done and based on the job and time it takes for a part-time mayor, at least right now, as far as what I'm doing, I'm suggesting that we make that position go from 18,000 a year to 30,000. It would be from $1,500 a month to $2,500 a month. So that's kind of the number that I've come to. I don't think I'm going to make a recommendation, also just to finish up some other discussions in this budget year to authorize a city administrator at this point, this budget. I think there's a lot of other financial obligations that we're taking on, you know, with the fire department, the land acquisition, the pension issue that got forgotten. I think for the near future, I'm okay with staying in this position as a part-time and not asking you all to authorize a city administrator going into this next budget. Now, what happens after that, we'll see. So that's my feeling on the mayor's situation.
I think the Kentucky Standard and their editorial does very good analysis of the options kind of looking at the city in the future, but I, I'm okay with 30. In fact, when I think about it, I want to say 36 and probably down the road, we need to go even to take another jump because the, because the buck stops with the mayor, you know, like Bill says, everybody, even if you had a city administrator, a lot of people still don't want to talk to the mayor. When I was county attorney, I had assistants, and everybody wanted to talk to the county attorneys so when they're, when they have problems. So a administrator can do some, maybe some staff stuff and head off some staff stuff and make those decisions, but as far as dealing with community and everything, it's a lot of it stops with the mayor. So I'm good anywhere between 30,000 a year and 36,000.
Well, just the same thing that you all suggested, nobody in this job does it for the money. I mean, we've been fortunate that previous mayors have all done it as part-time, made the time for it, and that's what I feel like is in our best interest going forward. And financially, I just don't want to be more aggressive than that because of all the other obligations we are facing in this kind of budget. So unless you all, that's going to be what I've recommended we put into the compensation for the mayor.
Now, I guess I'll point out I'm not going to run for mayor either, so.
Well, whether you're, whether you consider it a full-time position or a part-time position, it's still a 24/7 position. So, you know, and I'm saying everything I can speak from experience. And then the mayor's council form of government, when we talk about that city manager thing, the mayor is the total, he's the buck stops there, and as long as you've got the department head people that you can trust that can get the job done, whatever like that, they're still, they're still going to answer directly to the mayor. And I think at this time, from what I've seen and what I've had to deal with, you've got to get department head, you've got to get chief, you've got to get CFO, you've got to get HR person, along with all the other different departments in the city. So that's, and they, and they do report to the mayor, and the mayor makes a final call on those with the input that they do. So that's, that's where I start with that. I'll, I'll...
Go ahead.
Okay. I will say, I had written down 30,000 for the mayor. You actually work more than that mayor, I'm just going to let you know. But we can't pay you what, we can't pay you what you work.
It just needs to be up there some more because we talked about this at the last meeting, whether it's council, whether it's mayor, there will be that time and there are going to be people that will be sitting in these same chairs that will not be able to be reimbursed when they're missing work and that sort of thing. And so there has to be some consideration for that. And, you know, I know that's maybe not necessarily the case in this group as a whole right now, but going forward, that will always be the case for a mayor or a council member. So they have to have some way to compensate themselves for that lost time that they may have. But I'm comfortable with the job. I'm comfortable with, you know, really, as I say, I've done this twice now. I've been on the council for six years, and it never was about the money, but after 20 years, there needs to be some increase, I think, really for all of us in this room and for the people in the future. I don't think there's anybody else working for the same pay they were working for 20 years ago. It's an important job, so.
You know, I went back to the Consumer Price Index again on the mayor's pay, but then my final analysis was I looked at it and thinking, well, you know, the city has grown probably more than 35, 40%, especially the budget and the jobs, responsibilities of different, you know, cable TV and all that stuff that we've added. So if you take that consideration, if you add 35 to 40% plus the Consumer Price Index, that would be a 35 to 36,000 dollar figure. I just wanted to throw that out just so.
And that's, that has been suggested a lot by people that I've talked to, and some of you, some of you, your own selves have said, it ought to be done, but I'm comfortable with 30. That's what I'm, that's what I'm going to put in, and y'all want to vote against it? And redraft it, you're willing to do so.
Well, I've said before that, you know, I firmly believe that the mayor's compensation should be commensurate with their responsibilities, and I think that $30,000 number is a good number. It's probably a bit conservative, it's probably a bit good number, but we could never make our current mayor's salary commensurate with his experience. So, you know, I don't think that we can, we can, we can look at a number based on that because we don't know who the next mayor's going to be. So I'm good with that number.
Okay. Any other discussion on that?
I was going to say, Mayor, you were kind of acting like you could force that issue, but you do have to have somebody to introduce the ordinance. So don't burn every brick.
And of course, I...
You might not get any raise.
Well, we didn't mention the Consumer Price Index on it, but I think we all agreed that would go with this as well.
That's the way, that's the way both of them are written, is with the Consumer Price Index, and to answer, Councilman Dones, it's adjusted annually, just like the county offices.
Okay. So next item, business, is that all the discussion then, or are we okay with that on the discussion of both these ordinances? Okay. Then I guess, I'll get my screen. Then next would be the first reading for B 2018, 2018-10, Chapter 32 of the City Council. I need someone to introduce that for a first reading, and the figure will be 12, 12,500 plus the CPI.
Okay. Mayor, if I'm in order, I would like to introduce for first reading, ordinance number B 2018-10, modification for Chapter 32 of the City Council ordinance, and ask that be read. I don't know if you have that in summary or just in full. Ask it to be read in full.
I will do that. Ordinance number B 2018-10, an ordinance amending and adopting as amended, an ordinance related to Chapter 32 of City Council of the City of Barstown's Code of Ordinances. The City Council of the City of Barstown does hereby ordain as follows that the amendments may be made to Chapter 32 of City Council, Section 32.05, compensation of council member of the City of Barstown's Code of Ordinances follows. 32.05, compensation of council member, each council member shall be paid the sum of, strike, 750 add 1,250 dollars per month add, and shall be adjusted annually to increase compensation by amount equal to the increase in the Consumer Price Index for the preceding year as calculated by the Department for Local Government. All ordinances in conflict hereby, or herewith, are hereby repealed to the extent of such consent.
Okay. So introduced in the first reading, we don't have to take a vote, unless you all prefer to have a vote on the first reading. We'll have a second reading tomorrow night, so that'd be a vote. So wait till tomorrow night if you want. Okay. All right. The next item would be B 2018-09, Chapter 31 on the mayor, and you could have that introduced, and the amount would be inserted in that ordinance would be 25,000.
Mayor, if I may, if I'm in order, I'd like to introduce the first reading of ordinance number B 2018-09, amending, adopting, and amended ordinance related to Chapter 31, Mayor of the City of Barstown's Code of Ordinances, and have our city attorney read it in full.
Ordinance number B 2018-09, an ordinance amending and adopting as amended, an ordinance related to Chapter 31, Mayor of the City of Barstown's Code of Ordinances. The City Council of the City of Barstown, Kentucky, does ordain as follows that the amendments be made to Chapter 31, Mayor, Section 3104, compensation of the City of Barstown's Code of Ordinances as follows. Section 31.04, compensation, the mayor shall be paid the sum of, strike, $1,500 add $2,500 per month add, and shall be adjusted annually to increase compensation by the amount equal to the increase in the Consumer Price Index for the preceding year as calculated by the Department for Local Government. All ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Okay, thank you, Tim. That's first. I'll have a second reading on that tomorrow evening, so. Does anybody else have anything to do with covering all that, Tim, on it? So thank you, everybody, for their input today and the discussion, and letting me put time and decision-making process on both the compensation as well as the annual ordinance. So nothing else to come before the council, I'd ask a motion for a adjournment.
Don't move.
Motion by Councilman Williams, Senator, Senator, Councilman Butler. Any discussion? All in favor, if anybody said aye. Aye. Our votes. Motion to adjourn.
Councilmembers, there is, I don't know if many of you had sent your RSVPs in for our preservation distillery tomorrow from 11 to 2:00. And it's not 11 to 2:00 pop-in, it's 11 to 2:00 where there's going to be an agenda. Mayor Heaton will be speaking first, and then they'll have a ribbon cutting, and then they'll have a dinner, I mean, a lunch. So I just want to let you guys know, if you are going, it's 11 to 2:00. I mean, you don't have to say the 2:00, but it starts at 11:00. There is a meal, it's going to be served, and there is an agenda.
And RSVP.
Did you RSVP?
Yep.